For the tardy, can we, Madam Clerk, can we do the roll?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Marcy.
Here.
Mr. Schimpf.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Juin.
Here.
Motion approved, agenda is proposed.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda's open. I did have a conversation with Mr. Jacobs a little while ago, was in the office at the time, so he's gonna try to make it as soon as he can, just for reference. It is budget presentation time again, and it's our opportunity to kinda present from all the different suggestions that I got from council to try to put some things in there and work it around together. If one of you fine gentlemen over there would like to pass out some handouts, that would be very much appreciated. Alright, so we'll, we'll start just with some information that we have to kinda head under consideration before we move to the line item changes as well.
Is that the same thing?
Yeah, just keep, if you got extra ones, you can send them back, so.
Two handouts.
Yeah, we got 'em. Have them, have them, not got 'em. Ready?
You ready?
Yep.
Alright, so the first thing we're gonna talk about, and we have talked about this at an earlier work session, I should say good afternoon everybody first, I guess I'm in a hurry right now. So our valuation trends for this year, as we discussed a little bit at an earlier meeting, our total assessed valuation is 3.89.
Excuse me, can everyone hear? Yeah, slide the mic over.
It's just I can't see with this one, that's the problem.
Oh, that's him again, huh?
Yeah. So a total assessed value in the city is 3.89 billion, and of that, only 2.27 billion is taxable. So that's where one large difference is between the total property we see around us and what we actually collect property taxes from. And we also have about 279 million currently in TIF districts. So our FY '19 valuations, although there were increases in total assessed value of 1.55 percent, the taxable value actually declined. So the base that we earn our paycheck from actually went down by about a percent. And I think it's important to remember that as we talk about budgets this year. So we looked a little bit at what caused that valuation drop. This slide just tries to show a little bit about what's happening. Residential is the top red line, and that's really our bread and butter for our property taxes. And it did have a decline, it looks pretty slight on here just because it's large numbers. But the reduction for this year is 26.6 million. The next line down, which is commercial, we saw a reduction of 12.7 million in the taxable value of commercial properties. Then industrial and utility properties, I combined those, they saw a net reduction of 2 million. And our new category, which is multi-residential, that interestingly did see an increase of 17.7 million. But the net of all that is a $23.6 million reduction in our taxable value of properties. So then another question I had is how is that affecting who pays property taxes? And as most of you'll remember, as we've discussed this in prior years, the state has been increasing the portion of the total property tax dollars paid by residential every year for a number of years. This year, for the first time in a long time, we're seeing that change a little bit. The residential rollback factor was decreased, and what that means is the value of your house that's being taxed is less, by 2.3 percent. That's where most of that $26 million loss in residential value comes from, it's all from the change in the factor at the state level. So this year, where last year, 62 percent of our taxes were paid by residential, that's dropping to 61 percent. Thirty-two percent by commercial, 4 percent by our industrial and utilities, and 3 percent by the multi-residential. And that category, if you remember, is new since about fiscal 2015, I think. This is a slide we've looked at a couple of other times. You can see that Waterloo is the fifth largest in terms of population in the size of cities across the state. Unfortunately, in terms of our taxable property value, we're ranked 12th. So that's a pretty significant difference there, to have the largest population in number five, but we only have 12th largest in property value, which is how our property taxes are calculated. We also included on this slide the ranking of the tax rate, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, because we all know the tax rate is only one factor of the formula that drives property taxes. But our rate, if you took that in isolation, was second, which directly correlates to the fact that our property values are the lowest. The next slide we have, we've done some research comparing ourselves to other large cities in Iowa, and we wanted to show you how much we brought that levy rate down over the last number of years. We are actually now third lowest, last year we were second lowest across the state. Oops, look like we lost our TVs. So we are working very hard to bring the rate down, which does affect the taxes as well. Iowa City is still leading the pack on that, and Ames has had some strong declines in there this year. We also looked at property taxes paid per capita, that's another very common measure among cities. And things begin to, the picture begins to change a little bit when you see this. Waterloo, actually our taxes per capita are 7 percent less than the average, or $45, almost $46 less than the average. We're right in the middle of the pack when you compare the largest 20 cities. So when you use different measures to compare how we do, you get different results. Another thing that we talk about is the square miles of our city, and we do have very large city in terms of square miles. When you calculate our property taxes per square mile and compare them with the other 10 largest cities, we have the very lowest. And Waterloo's our 652,399 per square mile. Iowa City has the highest, theirs is 2 point, almost 2.3 million, that's a pretty significant difference.
Look, can I add one point too?
Yes.
So taking a look at our preliminary half-year numbers with regards to housing, which is important. Last year, we were at about 43 houses, roughly, we're at 37 now. But according to our data, we are, the value of the 37 is 2.5 million dollars higher than it was last year, which shows, you know, we're trending in the right direction, but it's kind of a slow pace, but we're 2.5 million dollars ahead of where we were at with less houses this year. So that, that gives us a good opportunity moving forward.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay to ask questions?
We, we wanna zip through here, I wanted to make that known, if it's a very quick question before she moves on.
It's just fiscal year '18 taxes per square mile, is that what is charged per resident within that, I mean, is that how this is computed?
No, I think it's total property tax dollars that are collected per square mile.
Okay, okay, thanks.
The next slide we have, I, I get asked about our debt pretty often, so this is another common comparison among the larger cities, is to say how much of our debt capacity have we used and how much is left. You can see, again, Waterloo is about fifth in terms of the amount we've used, which correlates well with our population, right in the middle of the pack again. And we have used just over half, at about 55 percent, and we have about 44-ish percent We also looked at monthly utility charges, and again, as you compare us with the other 10 largest cities, Waterloo has the very lowest in utility charges as well. So we have a lot of things that are good value for our money. When we compare city staffing levels, Waterloo begins to become lower than the average, we're third from the bottom of those top 10 cities, and this is budgeted positions of 549, and that includes all funds, it's not only your property tax-supported positions, that's everything. So I think we are already having our staff do more with less maybe than some other cities are able to do. That's just some research that we wanted to share, comparing us to our sister cities, I guess I'll call them. So then I think we're ready to go into our proposed budget highlights, and we're gonna start out, the levy proposed right now is $17.7629, and we decided to show that to you, broken out by some significant statistics. Police and fire, which is of course one of the main services provided by cities, actually makes up $12, and almost $12.15 of that levy. So two-thirds of the property tax dollar goes to support police and fire. That does not include a share of charges for human resources, or finance, or the other departments that support police and fire, that is strictly the actual police and fire departments. Our debt service levy, we're proposing at 2.98828, and that takes 17 percent of that 1776. Then, as you know, we have two voter, voted-in levies, one for the Grout Museum District and one for our library, that knocks off another 54 cents. So all other departments that are supported by property taxes in the city consume only $2 and two, and less than nine cents of the remaining levy, or 11 cent, 11 percent of the remaining levy is for all other areas. So sometimes I've heard people talk about not wanting to touch or reduce police and fire, and we thought it was important to illustrate, if we want to shrink our levy and we only wanna touch all other services, that's only 11 percent of the bill. So it's, we're trying to show you how difficult it really is to reduce the levy substantially without touching those other items. I've also provided a breakout of, of the other levy, and that's kind of by our major program. The first two, emergency management association and building inspections, on the state forums, those are actually part of public safety, I've pulled them out and separated them here. And when there's a number in parentheses, that means that they are generating more revenue than they are using in expenses, so when you see parentheses, it's kind of a net profit. Public works takes just under 78 cents, health and social services is 11, just under 11 and a half cents. Culture and recreation, as is typical in most cities, is the next largest category after police and fire, and that is about $2.32. Community and economic development is 12.6 cents. And then we get to some others that actually generate more revenue. General government, because we record certain revenues in that category, actually shows that a net revenue. I've included the state backfill on a separate line, and the use of fund balance, and that's how we get to that other 11 percent of the property tax levy. So to get to, when we talk about that tax levy rate that Mayor's proposing of 17.76, that would actually result in a reduction in residential property taxes of 1.41 percent. There would be a commercial increase slight, .93 percent, and I think commercial has seen at least a 15 percent reduction over the last seven years, so we're, that's turning around just slightly, again, because of the rollback change. The multi-residential, the new category, which, multi-residential properties, I probably should've mentioned that earlier, up until about 2014, those were categorized as commercial properties, and at that time, they were always 100 percent taxable. When the Property Tax Reform Act came in, and commercial and industrial started being charged, having to rollback so that they were only charged at 90 percent of the value, they adopted a new schedule for multi-residential that will eventually, is designed to bring it down to be taxed the same as a residential property. So multi-residential this year sees a 3.66 percent reduction, the largest reduction of any category. That's all that I have for the presentation today, there's, we've given you the adjustments that we've made, and Mayor, I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, and so. So we had the presentations of, what does a 2.5 percent impact do, what does a 5 percent impact do? So studied all of those areas, took into account some of council's request, and made some decreases in some following areas, and also some increases with regards to revenue generated, and you can go line by line and see where we were able to find some savings. Some of the departments, it's, it's skin on the bones, but we're continuing to take, look, look at ways to be able to share services and do different things as well. So building inspections, as you can see, increased with regards to revenue, human rights reduction, planning and zoning, you know, increases in revenue. In some of our departments, there is no way to, to increase revenues, 'cause they're not that type of department. Legal fees reduce, I think there's a line items in the mayor's office was a reduction. IT is mostly reductions, cultural and arts. And when you go through the, some of these departments received a 2.5, some received a 5 point, some of them may even be a little bit more deeper as well. See, library, airport, with the airport, we wanted to make that as general fund neutral, so that's where that number comes from. HR, police, police is, we asked for an increase in revenues as well, that's equates to part of. There's fire, there are two positions for fire that are on there to not be filled. Leisure, about a 64, which is, I believe, that was their 2.5. Clerk Finance, 87, 87 decrease along with some revenue increases. We lost some dollars with regards to the cable TV from the removal of the PEG fee. It's a cable fee, and I believe that's the state that, where that fee comes from, right? With that, the revenue.
That PEG fee stands for Public Education and Government Channels. We have had a franchise agreement with MediaCom for some years, and we are at the maximum that the state allows us to charge, of 5 percent, but we also were able to get a 35 cents per month, per subscriber fee. As of June of '18, that franchise agreement is expiring, and MediaCom has elected to go under a state franchise agreement, the laws, those laws were all changed about five years ago. So we can only, 5 percent's the maximum that we can charge, so we will lose that PEG fee starting July 1st, unfortunately.
And central garage estimates, some of these are not general fund areas. And then with insurance, we've had a couple good years in a row, so we were able to reduce Council, I had none, there was nothing in there. And one, one area is to have a .5 franchise fee increase. We had, I received proposals anywhere from 0 to about 1.25, I believe. I would, going above that right now, we'd have to talk about it, but that's something that should be saved for a little bit later if we decide to do it. There are some other cities that probably utilize all of that. And then debt service, which was something that's probably music to everyone's ears, went down as well. And then the Met request, which they've asked for this for a couple years in a row, we can't, I don't believe we can do it at this time. So with all of those changes, we're at 17.76, and for the most part, I believe that we can continue to provide services, and that we could continue to move to our restructuring or rework plan to realize some more savings in the future, so. We got about three to five minutes, if you have some questions, or you can give me a call tomorrow or sometime.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So I see on here residential change is a decrease in property taxes of 1.41 percent. When was the last time we had a change that was of that caliber? Is that normal every year, or does it increase? Do you have any history on that?
I believe in, Michelle, 2000, but this is probably the biggest decrease that we've had in the last, what, 15 to 17 years? So we can get that, but I think it's probably the biggest decrease in, in, at least over a decade or two.
To residential.
Yeah, to residential. Multi-family, that's been interesting, because the change is on the state level, they're trying to move that to shift to equal residential, residential rates. So there was a lot of revenue that was lost when they made that change for cities as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Explain the rollback replacement change, are we relying on the full 1.8 next year, or whatever it's gonna be, close to that?
That's a good question. Michelle, can you explain that rollback replacement change, and then I'll talk about the commercial rollback?
The, the change that's on here is just a change due to the change in the levy rate, because that's based on the levy rate. So we, we have not factored in any state legislation at this time that would change the calculation.
And is that number, that number, even if they don't make any changes, that's the, the amount that we are decreased by what they've done? So we lose revenue, if I, we lose revenue regardless, right? Is that right, or?
If we lower our levy, we do, yes. Yep, so I've, I've estimated, the other thing that's difficult to estimate, they froze the pot of money that all cities can get statewide last year. So we may get a slightly smaller, even if they decided to pay out 100 percent, that's, it's all depends on what everybody else is getting. So I put in a very slight reduction for that prior to the new legislation that's being proposed at the state level. So the actual general levies portion is probably about 1.35 million, is what we have in here today.
And, and I love to talk about some options about if the, I haven't heard two-thirds being gone, I've heard the governor's proposal left the backfill in, and I think they're working for that. There is a proposal on the floor to take a look at time limits as well, if I'm not mistaken, whether it be a three-year, five-year, I haven't heard the complete elimination unless someone, someone said that, but that's why I'm very careful with that .5 right now. And so I don't think that, this is just my opinion, to go above that right now, if we need some extra cash generated at a certain time, the council has the discretion to always raise that franchise fee, but that's why I don't think it should go any higher. If we come back and they say we need an additional $400,000 or so, you do have some, you do have some options that we can use right now. Are you finished with your question?
I had a follow-up, I think it's very dangerous to count on all that money.
Right, right, yeah, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, and Michelle, I was just wondering, we pass a budget based on what you're saying here, and then on March 8th, and then after that, they come out and they do something that reduces that significantly, then what are our options at that point in time, once we pass the budget?
Tax, right?
I think you have a couple options of that, you can't change the property tax at that point. You can look at other sources of revenue, such as the utility franchise fee, or we would have to reduce expenses, and, and we have been through this before in about, I don't know if it was 2004 or 2006, the last time the state broke a replacement revenue promise to us, so, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Michelle, would, would we be able to use part of the rainy day fund too? Or is that not reachable after we pass a budget March 8th?
No, that's an option that you would have also.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I just don't know why we would wanna set ourselves up for this, other cities have been very wise and have not figured that number into the budget. I think we should be smarter.
And you know, so, so we have some, we have some opportunities for revenue generation. You bring up a good point too, I just had a conversation with a colleague in Des Moines, and so they're looking at either 20 or 30 percent levy rate increase if they don't get their current bond referendum passed March 6. So some folks have already certified their budgets, our neighbor, they, they didn't include it, or they, they included it in their mix, but other places have already certified a budget. This conversation, you know, for the most part, folks were thinking, yeah, it could potentially be on the table, but it wouldn't be this year, it would be in '20. And one of the sessions that we went through, it was like potentially '20. So I, I haven't heard anything where they said it's going to be the complete elimination of the rollback, but it is an interesting year, and it's an election year for legislators too, so that'll be something that we'll have to discuss, but absolutely okay with having some more dialogue, if you would like.
I think it's absolutely imperative that we don't count on that money. I think the rumor out there is that we may get a third at best.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Well, at this point in time, I, the, we've got three days until the budget hearing, but I know that, that I have some proposals to look at, I don't know if anybody else does for sure, but when can we have that kind of conversation? Is that, or is that all reserved for Thursday night?
That would be Thursday, and we, I took a lot of suggestions as well on some of these, and tried to come up with in the middle, but we can have that conversation Thursday also. If there's something very pressing, let me know, but this is what I'm gonna place on the agenda for you to approve. If you got a couple of amendment, amendments, we'll see how that goes, but this is what I'll propose, based upon what I received prior to asking for suggestions.
Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up, the, so if we have proposals there, are we gonna have any time bef, are we gonna have a work session or anything on, on Thursday, so that we can go over those prior to the actual meeting taking place?
Haven't thought about that. I was just gonna have a public meeting, and those things can be discussed, but wanna talk about that? We, we can talk about that and see how that works procedurally, I don't know. 'Cause you can't, you can't vote, 'cause this is, it's not a work session, this is a.
I think the only thing council may wanna be cautious about is if you have additional budget suggestions that you want Mayor Michelle to take into consideration, they need to be provided to them as soon as possible, because the point of Thursday's meeting is to have the public hearing to actually adopt the budget. So if there's any other calculations that need to take place.
And.
In order to have those conversations on Thursday, probably be best to have them sooner rather than later.
And I know we've had this discussion in the past, and that is that if we're handed stuff at the last minute and we don't have time to look at it, then it's very difficult to make an informed decision without that information in front of us, so that's why I would hope, you know, I know that I've submitted mine to Michelle, and I wanna have the opportunity to go talk to her about that again. and I want to have the opportunity to go talk to her about that again. And I'm sure that there are other people on council who have some ideas about what they'd like to see for a budget, and so that we're spot on with what we would want to at least discuss with the council, with the rest of the council, as far as what our proposals are, without even taking a vote, so that the council sees that there are other options out there. And they're presented with those ideas. I have no problem with my proposals being given to the rest of council, they're there now. But I would hope that the rest of the council, if they had some suggestions or proposals, that they would present those to us, rather than us being handed those at 5:30 PM on March 8th, Mr. Mayor.
We need to wrap up. We need to just figure out how to do that. We'll talk tonight or in the morning and figure out how council can get all of that without procedurally.
Could we have a work session? Is that possible, or is that, we're running out of time?
I'm not going to make a decision right now. But that's why I asked for information a while ago, so we can put all this stuff together. And so we'll talk about it tonight and tomorrow and get back to council as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
One last question. At this levy rate, 17.76, would we be the highest in the state for cities our size?
Nope.
We are at number two now, right?
Number two, and I'm hoping within the next year and a half, that's going to change. We need to wrap, we need to wrap this up. And these are questions you can ask, Mr. Morris.
One final thing in response to Councilwoman Klein's statement. I know that I have checked with various cities, and I know that Council Bluffs has raised theirs to like 18.26, from 17.9 to 18.26. That's where theirs is at now.
Let's close this down. We'll get that information for Monday night, or we'll get it to council.
Mr. Mayor, it'd be interesting if we could find out how many other cities are using their rollback income. Is that something we could find out easily?
We'll try to figure that out. We absolutely need to close this down.
Motion adjourned.
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourned.
Roll call, please.
Hold on a second. I don't have my minutes up. Sorry.
Take your time.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here. Make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda and the minutes as of February 26, 2018, as proposed.
Second.
Discussion. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Make a motion to approve the travel requests as presented.
Madam Chairwoman, I make a motion to adopt the travel request tonight. We have Sergeant Gerke, Investigator Berry, Investigator Zubach, and CFPD Gersma to attend 2018 Iowa Narcotic Officer Association Conference in West Des Moines, Iowa, March 27 through 29, not to exceed $2,470. Lieutenant Johnson to attend a class at Cedar Rapids for training, March 9 through 11, not to exceed $280. And it's going to be March 9 through 11, and also March 23 through the 25th as well. Wayne Castle, Associate Engineer, to attend the 2018 Iowa Water Conference in Ames, March 21st to the 22nd, not to exceed $355. Luke Even, Forest Sheaf Foreman, to attend the Minnesota Shade Tree Course in Arden Hills, Minnesota, March 13 through the 14th, not to exceed $530.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That refund just kind of got in there. Somebody make a motion to approve that?
Madam Chairperson, we've got a refund request in the amount of $210 for garbage fees paid on a vacant property located at 520 Elm Street.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Terrific. Ask for a motion for the pre-authorization to expend over $1,000.
Madam Chairperson. I'd like to make the following motions, pre-authorization to expend over $1,000. First is for building maintenance with the mountain estimated shipping and handling of $1,324 for semi-annual fire suppression system for Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. Next is from the Fire Department with the mountain estimated shipping and handling $1,953, plus $200 shipping and handling for primer sub-SE 12-vol VPE pump. Next is a garage and mountain estimated shipping and handling of $2,181.98, plus $400 shipping and handling from pins and links for motor grader. And next is Leisure Services with the mountain estimated shipping and handling of $3,280 for advertising of the three municipal golf courses, Gates, Warren, Memorial, and South Hills during the March Madness College Basketball Tournaments. Next is from Leisure Services, mountain estimated shipping and handling of $13,952 for trees for the Plants Some Shade Project in partnership with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and Mid-American Energy. Next is for Mayor Quentin Hart for the mountain estimated shipping and handling of $650, estimated for the mayor's top teen awards and mayor's volunteer awards to be held in Waterloo. And next is sanitation with mountain estimated shipping and handling of $16,694.63 for cart tipper and dumpster kick bar for the rear loader truck number 151201. Next is the Sewer Department with the mountain estimated shipping and handling of $8,811.18 for radio communication systems. We'll install equipment, calibrate Kenwood Radio and Z-tron Model 18 Plus, program caller ID into 37 lift stations, radios for testing lift station alarms for proper operations. And finally, it's traffic operations about an estimated shipping and handling of $15,488.66 for 16-miller burned octa-tube eight-sided tapered steel streetlight poles. And that was a tongue twister. And excuse me, Chief Treelor, I probably really goofed that one up. So excuse my mispronunciation there, Pat.
Second.
There's one more, isn't there?
No, that was it. Madam Chairperson.
Oh, okay, for the pump? The sub-SE 12-V pump? What happened to that?
That was number seven, Madam Chairperson.
Moved it up. I'm scared, sorry. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, sir.
Discussion, please.
Yes.
Number six, what is that? Is it a annual, semi-annual inspection? And also, is that a building that we no longer own, or?
Who would like to own? Noel's going to address that.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The city of Waterloo does still own the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. We're working on trying to close on the previously approved development agreement, disposal of that with Mr. Edwin Leslie, but we have not done that. This is a semi-annual fire suppression system that's required by fire safety codes for occupancy of that building and for them to be able to utilize the building.
So it's like an inspection or test?
Correct.
Good.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Okay, thank you. Then I would make a motion to approve the project budget for the Mid-American Energy Plants Some Shade Number 17 project, funded with the state grant in the amount of $8,201.20, and the sale of trees in the amount of $6,750, for total project cost of $14,951.20, as submitted by Leisure Services.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Make a motion to approve as contained in accounts payable invoice report dated March 5, 2018, in the amount of $2,795,604.89, be received, placed on file, approved, and forwarded to the full council. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's city council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schim.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amis.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, thank you. We have a full council. We have our moment of silence, and after that, we will be led in the pledge by Chief Troka. Please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you, Chief.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to accept and approve the agenda as proposed and the minutes of the February 26 regular session meeting.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just have a procedural question, or I guess a couple of questions from a procedural nature. So I think it now would be an appropriate time to answer this. Having to do with item number 14. And this has nothing to do with item number 14, but what I was wondering about is, in the past, I know I and some other council members have asked to add an item to the agenda, and we were told that in order to do that, a council member had to have a certain amount of support from other council members to put that item on the agenda. Is that correct? I'm not sure who this is a question for.
Yeah, I think I probably, probably put him on, Kelly, to place an item on the agenda.
I know that since I've been clerk, there have been some council requests to have items added to the agenda, and we've just added them to the agenda. I know Mr. Morrissey's added some items. Mr. Lind has had some items added to the agenda. I have heard from some council members that under a previous mayor, there was a requirement to have X number of council members in agreement prior to adding items to the agenda. I have, however, looked through our code, looked through other types of documents that I found in my clerk's office, and have not found that written down anywhere.
So since you've been clerk, you've allowed a single council member to put something on the agenda?
Along with the mayor as well.
Yeah, we've...
But without any other council member?
Correct, yep.
And there are two council members, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Amis was in support of at least bringing this for the agenda. I don't know how we vote, but at least taking a look at it as well. The motion to rescind last week was asked in the appropriate manner. And when we were going to get to this question, I was going to have Dave stand up and give an explanation about where we're at at this point, whether, you know, some of the questions that I was asked last week and the previous week. And then I was going to have our clerk explain exactly what this is talking, talking about before we get there. So there was support. And I have allowed, whether or not I agree, whether or not I, still have allowed some motions to get on there.
Okay. And when is the deadline for adding something to the agenda?
It's Wednesdays at 10 o'clock.
Not Tuesdays?
Correct, Wednesday.
And when was this item added to the agenda? Because I think as of Thursday afternoon, it wasn't on my notice.
It was submitted to me at the meeting by Mr. Morrissey, and I added it to the agenda on Friday. But deadlines for getting items to the clerk's office to be reviewed is Wednesdays at 10 o'clock.
And I wanted to see if it was a legal, do that based upon the things that have happened, so.
Got you. And then my understanding also is that for an item to be brought back, it needs to be brought back by somebody from the prevailing side? Now, is that what you were referencing a little bit earlier?
Excellent question. So there's a, there is a motion to reconsider, and that could be, that can be asked later on in that meeting or the following meeting. But that can be asked, but it's up to those on the prevailing side if they want to bring that back. The motion to rescind is a little bit different than the motion to reconsider. So it was, I had to make sure it was right place. So that's different than a motion to reconsider.
Okay. And so then going forward, anybody on the council, anytime that a vote does not go their way, we're basically going to be allowing to have it be brought back up again and vote on it again? I mean, is that kind of where we're heading, or?
If you're asking my opinion, I would hope not. There were several votes that had come up that I wasn't in agreement with. And I don't vote, but I'm hoping that's not a common practice. There are some areas where, if you take a look at what we've done previously, where if staff saw that maybe an area that we had plotted may be a little bit different, or something had changed with the right of way, and we'd had to go in and rescind something that was done incorrectly, then that's when we saw the rescinding of a vote. But I can't remember but one time where a situation like this had happened, and that was with the MLK Park. There was a certain amount of lapsed time, if you remember that. I think we were both in ruling for that, and that's where we did. But I don't vote, but I'm hoping that that's not a current practice, unless there was something that was done that was, yeah. So I'll, and I'll have more information, but absolutely sensitive to what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address that issue that Councilman Schmidt, and I'm taking this directly from... Unless you want me just to wait until number 14 comes up, Mr. Mayor?
It's not germane right now. I've answered.
I thought, I thought.
Oh, because you're the, you're the proposer. You're the proposer, so you do get an opportunity to answer.
Well, and in answer to that, a motion can't be rescinded or can't be amended for these reasons. If someone makes a motion to reconsider the vote, and it can be called up, which that never happened. If action on the motion has been carried out and it is impossible to undo, and nothing has happened in that regard, wherein resignation is acted upon and the person notified, and then it has to do with membership, and when something other to do was elected. So nothing has happened regarding this motion that would preclude it from a motion to rescind, whereas on other occasions, a rescind would be totally out of order because the action had already been completed with a follow-through on whatever that motion approved, so.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the agenda.
In the minutes.
In the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Now it is time for oral presentations. It's your opportunity to talk about non-agenda-related items. So if you would please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what your thoughts are.
Hi, Mayor, hi, council. Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. You know, the last few weeks, I've been coming to the meetings. I've been coming a long time, by the way. You know, there's been a lot of disrespect shown in the council chambers. I've heard cowards, I've heard the council called stupid idiots, and I've heard even council people calling other council people out on issues, which I think in number five on the front of the agenda, you know, is against all the rules. And the person that got up here and called the people stupid idiots is a leader in our community and ahead of one of the neighborhood associations. And I think that's setting a bad example for other people out there watching the council meetings, and especially our little kids, so. Thank you, Mayor.
I agree, and I would also add that... Yeah, I, I, I agree, and I would also add that it, it goes, it goes around, and, uh, we're going to do better, uh, keeping things germane, taking names out, and trying to stick to a little bit more to what's on, what we, what we voted on as far as our rules of procedure. So, uh, we'll get better.
Thank you.
Hey, John, I think Bruce was edging up to, to...
You can hit, you can hit faster than I can. Okay, you ready? Uh, John Sherbin, seventeen-fifteen Robin Road. I have a little problem with this, uh, Five Sullivan Brothers operation. We've spent thousands and thousands of dollars since we sold it. Uh, I've heard many times that we, and we were in a rush to get that done because we had all legalities and all this thing that was done. So Mr., uh, I got a gentleman that purchased it could get on with business because he had to go and get all these papers signed and, and make it legal to run his whatevers. So now we're here in March, we're still paying for stuff. No chance, I don't know, uh, we've had two or three major events in the Five Sullivan Brothers Center. I don't know who's managing that. I'd be very curious to know, is Waterloo managing that? Uh, where is the, where's the cash going? What's going on? It seems like, uh, uh, when you make a deal with somebody, it shouldn't stretch out six, eight, ten months from the time you said you were gonna send the papers. So, uh, how many more thousands of dollars are we gonna spend on that building? You know, if you guys want to spend money, you can come over and help me fix my house. Uh, the field's getting muddy, guys. You know, we've got a lot of issues, and we're dragging our feet through a muddy field. And it seems like we need to get, uh, get this thing smoothed out a little bit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can somebody grab the microphone?
Thank you. Good evening, Bruce T. Cazzer, CRT Apartments, Waterloo. I'm calling for appreciation for the bus drivers because they're the prime example of the dedication to their duties. With this rose of bad day award this afternoon, didn't have any really major concerns other than the safety for everybody on the board, the bus, plus the other, other vehicles on the road. And it's really, it's not some job they did tonight. So my hats off to the bus drivers. Can't find them really servants. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So hats off to the bus drivers and the, uh, street departments and all those that have to go out there and clean them out, uh, for the buses as well. Any other comments?
Tim Hurley, nineteen-thirty-three Crab Apple Lane in Waterloo, Mr. Mayor, council members. Um, I'm not here for any specific item per se. I'm just pretty much acting on my impulses, um, from, um, for some time, and perhaps maybe a change in tone. So a couple of things, and I think that my perspective, uh, has been winnowed, cultured, if you will, by my recent experience with some civic organizations, business organizations, namely the Waterloo Development Corp., the Greater Cedar Valley Alliance, the Cedar Valley Tech Works, the Waterloo Community Foundation, and the Black Heart County Gaming Association. Those things, um, are helping my perspective tonight. None of those organizations, um, have sponsored me or said, "Go on down," or told me what to say. I'm not speaking for them. I'm speaking primarily as a citizen. First thing on my list is a hearty thank you to every one of you, all eight of you elected officials. Uh, I know it's always, uh, sometimes mundane, and very often a tough job that which you do, especially at budget time. I'm blessed with having experienced what you're going through, um, as first as a council representative of Ward One for a couple of years, and then serving as mayor for six years. So I'm one of a very few privileged, and I, I mean, I don't mean that in the sense that I'm above, but I felt very privileged to have served the citizens of Waterloo. Um, and so I know how excruciatingly difficult your jobs as elected officials can be at times. Uh, but I also understand what a tremendous gift it is to succeed and to serve your fellow citizens in the process. So thank you. You're all doing, uh, a very good job in what you think is best and how you think it should be done. I had always, uh, in my tenure as a councilperson and as a mayor, uh, been impressed with staff, and I don't want to be remiss in thanking the department heads, the staff, and the citizens, the employees of the City of Waterloo for what they do day in and day out. They don't have a two-year career or a four-year. Um, they're here every day, uh, doing what we ask and direct them to, to do. So, uh, secondly, um, just occurs to me that as human beings, we're hardwired to always want more, no matter what it is. And, um, that sometimes raises, that's really it.
Uh, I'd usually give people a, a little, a couple of seconds to wrap up.
I'll be, I'll be quick. I, I just, in, in your deliberations, uh, and here I'm speaking from that business and that organizational, um, body that didn't send me down here, but experientially. Sometimes, in, in regard to tough decisions, and particularly the budget, it, what gets, it's as important, as important as what gets done is how it gets done. So focusing on the how, uh, I urge you all to proceed towards the what with civility, with compromise, with compassion, cooperation, and reflection. It's easier to count our bones and our aches and pains than it is to count our blessings, and I'd ask you to keep that in mind. Finally, I'll leave you with, uh, something we don't, none of us spend enough time on, and that's the good things. The good things about our community, about our city, and about our government. And I could run the same litany that you could. I just ask you to do that once in a while, from private sector development to improvements in education, a riverfront downtown, new venues, uh, housing starts. Fact is, you're doing well, people.
Mr. Hurley, they're gonna, they're gonna get me once I leave out of here if I allow it to continue.
All right, I'm just, I'm proud of you. Uh, I ask you to proceed, uh, I thank you. I ask you to proceed with civility and, uh, keep in, finally, keep in mind the good things that you've all been a part of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address? Is there anyone else that would like to address? Who? Council, um, for non-agenda-related items?
Josh Powers, fifty-seven-twenty-one Blue Sage Road. Um, just to kind of capitalize on what Michelle was probably talking about earlier, this is what I can come up with, the actual value of living in Waterloo. These are addresses here in Waterloo, a cross-section of Waterloo. This is their assessed value in Waterloo. That is their taxes in Waterloo. If you've figured it out with a thirty thousand, a thirty-year mortgage, uh, that is the difference. And then the difference in their taxes as well compared to Cedar Falls. As you can see, the value of Waterloo is here, not in Cedar Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, uh, address the, uh, council going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
All right. We're gonna have council reports here?
Yeah, I was just trying to see if anyone in the public. So, uh, now it's our time for council updates. Any highlights? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, uh, talk about a couple of things. Uh, one of them is I was very happy and very proud to have, uh, uh, our fiftieth Ward Three, uh, meeting, uh, about ten days ago. And, uh, although it was very inclement weather, we had ten hearty souls show up. And, uh, we had lively discussion about what was going on, uh, uh, down here in council, City Hall, in the City of Waterloo, uh, and, uh, some recommendations as far as what they would like to see the budget include, which was that they want services to be maintained. Uh, and if it means paying it a little bit more, uh, so be it. The cost of living, uh, is not going down. We don't have price controls or anything like that, but we sure do have, uh, costs of, uh, different products and services going up. Uh, so that's a message I took from that. Uh, secondly, last week, I had an opportunity to, uh, be involved with a webinar, uh, from Smart Growth, and I think most of the council probably got that, um, uh, email as well. And it included, uh, it was an hour-long presentation which, uh, dealt with the issue and a program from First and Main. And it is, uh, something that everybody on council could si- sign up on to be involved in. And just real briefly, um, they have a series of strategies that they want to use. They want to have three hundred elected officials sign up by April first. I know that I've signed up and signed on to this because of what it represents and how they're going to be appealing to the federal government to make use of this First and Main program to enrich and, enrich, enhance, uh, and improve our communities. Uh, the, one of their three things was to, uh, they wanted to, uh, maintain what we currently have. They wanted to improve things that, um, programs and projects that were in need of, uh, some, um, uh, injection of some new thoughts, but the program idea was still good. And then the final, uh, concept involved creating, um, uh, new programs and new things that would enhance your communities. And then they have a strategy, it's, it's a four-part strategy. And so I, I would encourage the rest of council to look at that and sign on to it if you want to be one of the three hundreds that they're looking for to, uh, have sign on to that by April first. And there's a conference, April twenty, like, first through twenty-fourth that I think is coincidental with the Cedar Valley Coalition, uh, going out there as well. And they're gonna send fifty people from those three hundred to go out there. Then the last thing is that I just had information given to me that the, uh, December, uh, Tax Act that was just passed by the federal government includes a new program there called Opportunity Zones that I think that we should take a look at too, Mr. Mayor. So with that, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Uh, just wanted to, um, make a comment. I had, um, an opportunity last Friday to actually read to some, um, grade school students, fourth grade over in Lincoln, and just want to say that was through the, um, Big Brothers Big Sisters. I, I believe, uh, Councilwoman Juwan also had the opportunity to read, but I'm just, I just want to say that if you get the opportunity to do that, to read to our youth, that was one of the most fulfilling things that I've had happen in a long time, so...
I agree.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Um, I've had some people still reach out to me from the last, um, council update. And just a reminder, I know we were going through budget time. If we could talk about the MediaCom franchise fee, um, or what we, Michelle had kind of mentioned out there. We could have a work session on that once budget time is done. And then also I've had some people reach out to me too as far as where we're at with the possible live streaming of council meetings.
And if I could just note, we do have a work session scheduled. It'll be for later in March, though.
Perfect, thank you.
And we'll have representatives from there as well. And then I'm just hoping we can get through the next week or so and get things settled. And then, uh, probably get you and, uh, other Chris together, and then let's talk about it because, um, another council member reached out to me as well about doing the same thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, as one of the two at-large council members, get to attend a lot of neighborhood association meetings. And I also happen to be fortunate enough to be on a number of, uh, nonprofit boards and commissions. And, and what I've heard for the last month or two is a request that the, the city council and department heads look to do anything and everything they can do to be able to provide the services that people expect at a reasonable rate and to look for any and every efficiency they can. Um, I think we're seeing this at all government levels, including the state, where, um, they're really pushing the envelope to return money to the taxpayers' pockets. And I think that's what people would like to see.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, make a motion to receive and place on file all oral comments made.
Second.
A motion's been made with the second. Uh, is that a roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Okay, make a motion to receive, place on file, and accept the consent agenda with the addition to number A1 of two million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second.
All right, the motion.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Motion's been made with the second. Yeah.
Um, I would like to pull off number six from the Finance Committee report.
From the Finance Committee?
Yeah.
From the consent agenda?
Yeah, from the consent agenda, but it was under the Finance Committee, number six. It was the Convention Center payment. I'd like to discuss that.
So on the bills payment?
From the bills payment?
It was in the finance meeting, and it was number six.
And that was a preauth on Finance Committee?
I don't know what she's talking about.
So it's not on the...
Under building maintenance?
Is it on the agenda?
Hold on, hold on. Let Kelly.
That was on the Finance Committee
Yeah.
as a preauthorization.
Yeah.
So it's not actually on the, um, council agenda for discussion.
So we can't pull it off and talk about it at all?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Um, you want to give me a call or something tomorrow on, so I can, you know, try to figure out what's going on?
Sure.
If you want to, okay.
Sure.
All right, um, the motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have an appointment. Uh, Angela Weekly has been appointed to the Community Development Board. Um, I don't know, is she here? Is she here? Hi, Angie. Uh, thank you much for your service. Uh, you don't have to come up front, but... Now, she's anxious. Thank you much for, um... Look forward to, uh, to, uh, you working hard with the city, so... Uh, number two in public hearings.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the two thousand eighteen spring stump removal project.
Can we get a second? Motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time? Okay.
Give me again, Bruce T. Cazzer, CRT Apartments, Waterloo. I'm wondering, is the, is the ground, when they remove the stump to prevent the ash borers, is there anything to treat the hole of the, of the sod where the stump's removed from to prevent the ash borer from coming back?
Is that your only question?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Hudding?
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Um, when they remove the stumps, they actually grind down about a foot below the surface and put soil on top of it. That should effectively eliminate the ash borer from the site. We are, um, totally infested in the entire state of Iowa, so there's really no effective way to eliminate the ash borer. But, but once that stump is removed and the soil's replaced, it should remove them from the site.
All right, thank you. Any other questions going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plan, specifications, form of contract, et cetera. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, that item cares.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juin?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item cares.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read the... to read the bids.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk?
All right, our estimate was $100,000. The first bidder was JBL Rentals LLC of Parkersburg, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $102,000. Second bidder was Wilson Custom Tree Service of Cresco, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $92,490.81. The third bidder was Schaefer Tree and Lawn Service of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided 5% security. Their bid amount was $129,800.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the 2018 spring stump removal project bid to Wilson Custom Trees of Cresco, Iowa, in the amount of $92,480.81. Approving the contract. Bonds and certificate of insurance, and authorize the mayor to execute.
All right, motion, motion's been made with the second by Mr. Amos. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwann?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof publication of notice of public hearing on the request by CRF Rentals for a site plan amendment to the CP Plan Commercial District for construction of a 5,184 square-foot commercial building located south of 2911 Southland Drive.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda going a second time?
I'm Chris Fishels from 4736 Yellowstone in Waterloo. I'm here to answer any questions on the project, if you guys have any. I'm the developer on it. No questions? All right, perfect.
Well, council, council has a round after this.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, I'm here if you guys would have questions, so if you need anything from me, just let me know.
All right.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of the Planning, Program, and Zoning Commission.
Second. And I would probably add his comments as well.
And the comments of Mr. Chris Fishels.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079 is amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in section 10-4-4, approving a site plan amendment on a certain property located south of 2911 Southland Drive.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fishels, what is the, is there an urgency on this by chance?
Mr. Fishels, how quickly do we need to move on this?
I'm very flexible, so I mean, I just want to break ground this spring. April 15th would be ideal, so I mean, I don't see we need to suspend any rules on this situation. I appreciate the interest of it, but I think we're sitting good on time. Staff's been awesome about getting this ran through, so we have plenty of time to still break ground in the springtime, so.
All right, all right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwann?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mrs. Juwann?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
All right, that is our first all-no vote.
Unanimous!
Progress is a happening.
Nice job, Chris.
All right, number, number four, please. Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd make a motion to receive and file proof publication notice of public hearing on a request by Michael Crane to vacate a platted 20-foot utility easement located along the southerly property line for construction of 192 square-foot shed located at 235 Niagara Drive.
We get a second? Or maybe not? Motion's been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, Mike Crane, 235 Niagara. So I purchased this property in June, and benedict to me there was a utility easement. And so when I went to apply for a building permit, that was discovered. And so went to planning and zoning, and they approved this. And so I would just ask that you expedite to get this thing done, so I can put my shed up. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments and the recommendation of the approval of the Planning, Program, and Zoning Commission.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider, and pass for the first time, and ordinance approving a request by Michael Crane to vacate a platted 20-foot utility easement located along the southerly property line for construction of 192 square-foot shed located at 235 Niagara Drive.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Juwann?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwann?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. I know we have a representative here. If anyone has anything they would like to say about this project, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts. All right?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of seven city-owned properties generally located within the Walnut Neighborhood, Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity for $1, authorized the mayor and city clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. I think Noel did provide us with the longest piece of paper I've ever seen, with different items to kind of talk about some of the economic impacts that it's going to have. Just really briefly, do you want to talk about the economic impact? I don't know if this is legal size, or...
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We only have one printer that can print that big, so. Summary, just talking about the benefits. You know, first off, the city's going to save money in maintenance of the lots. This is a good show of our aggressive use of the 657A process that we've been using to, to clean up blight and acquire lots for redevelopment. The city's cure and clura to encourage infill housing. City's historic study of the Walnut Neighborhood, our partnerships with All In Grocers, JSA, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Walnut Neighborhood Organization. Total property taxes received, they're going to be building homes in this area under the agreement over the 10-year span, seven new homes and rehabilitation of other homes in the area by Habitat, plus the reinvestment by others of other homes, grocery store, JSA, and general support of the neighborhood. Again, we're gaining new homes, new tax base, and really putting in some new development and a major entryway into the city.
Just also with regards to, yeah, we're building new houses in, you know, the south side and other areas, but it's good to see a continuation of investment in some of our areas that need the help and support and some new vitality in life. So this is going to help overall for the city. So any questions for Noel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm totally, I'm in favor of this, but one of the things, when I was going through this, it talks about the different properties, but, and then at the end it gives a, you know, platted legal description, but there was no aerial view or anything like that that showed where the properties are. Could, could we get that, Noel, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, we have a map on that. We'll get that to you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, no other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwann?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwann?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Item carries.
There's still some left to read on that, right? There's still some left to read on that?
Yeah, the adopt a resolution. It's kind of hard to see, but after the dollar.
I'm moved to adopt a resolution approving the development agreement with Iowa Heartland Habitat for Humanity and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement.
Second. Did you say done?
All done.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwann?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
All right, congratulations. We're expecting big things. All right, can someone take number six, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the demolition and site clearance services contract for 807 East Fourth Street and 809 through 811 East Fourth Street.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these particular, this particular item on the agenda? I think we had a presentation about this a little while ago, what's going to happen there, going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing?
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
I'd like to make a motion, adopting a resolution confirming approval of plan specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Let me take a step back. I'm probably, no, because some folks that may be watching probably haven't seen this, so tell us what's happening here.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. As you recall, the City of Waterloo entered into a development agreement with the Boys and Girls Club to redevelop these two sites, 809 and, and 810, 809 to 811 and 807 East the city of Waterloo entered into a development agreement with the Boys and Girls Club to redevelop these two sites, eight oh nine and eight ten, eight oh nine to eight eleven and eight oh seven East Fourth Street. So there's multiple addresses for the two buildings. They've sat vacant for a number of years. As a part of our, part of the development agreement, we are going to demolish these structures and raise them to the ground. And the teen center will be built on this site. So it's a good reuse for this area, eliminating blight as well as bringing up new development in the Walnut neighborhood area.
So a little bit difference, a little bit different based upon the location. I know one thing, when you're coming out of East High School and you're a high school student and you're trying to think about your future to walk by and see blighted buildings right outside of where you're at and also supporting the development that's taking place in that area. So it's very timely and very timely happening. And we had been looking for years to figure out how we can tie something in positive to that location, so.
That is correct.
All right, any other questions for Noel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, I don't see Mr. Rowe here, but that's another great one, too.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make-
Oh, we're not done yet, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, item carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Madam Clerk?
The estimate for option A is thirteen thousand dollars. The estimate for option B is eighteen thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Kelly Demolition and Excavating LLC of Mount Vernon, Iowa. They provided five percent.
Any relation?
No, they spelled Kelly wrong. Forgot the E at the end. They provided five percent security. Their bid for item A is nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Item B, twenty-five thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Second bidder was Peterson Contractors Incorporated of Ryanbeck, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for A is ten thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents. B, sixteen thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Third bidder was Benton Sand and Gravel, Cedar Falls, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Bid A, twelve thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. B, sixteen thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Fourth bidder was Frickson Brothers Excavating of Evansdale, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Item A, fifteen thousand dollars. B, twenty-five thousand dollars. Final bidder was Lehman Trucking and Excavating Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Bid for option A, nine thousand dollars. B, ten thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Competition is good. All right, seven, eight, and nine, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, who was that?
Mr. Schimpf.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number seven is adopting a resolution approving requests by CGA engineers on behalf of BCS Properties LLC for the final plat of Village West, second edition, and three lot improvement subdivision located northwest corner of Highway sixty-three and West Ridgeway Avenue. The next item is adopting a resolution approving development agreement with CRF Rentals LLC for the development of a five thousand square foot commercial building with a value no less than two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, offering property tax rebates of year one through three at seventy percent and year four through seven for sixty-five percent and authorize the mayor to execute said document. And the last item is adopting a resolution approving funding agreement with Blackout County Gaming Association for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar match for University Avenue reconstruction enhancements and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions or anyone with questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to table number eight until that is fully passed on the second and third reading? I would be, I would be in favor of number eight, I'm just. Mr. Anderson. Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. One is a zoning action and one is an economic development action under the TIP district powers. You could certainly approve it tonight, number eight, and move ahead with that. Obviously, he still will not be able to take out a building permit until the zoning action is done. So they're not actually contingent upon each other in terms of a timing wise, but he will need to get both actions done for construction.
So the one talks about the deal. The other one is just the rezoning of that area. So if we, if we go through and just say on the rezoning, the last reading or a second, third, or third is struck down, how does that impact what's on number eight? Is that-
Number eight would be there, but he wouldn't legally be able to build under the zoning action.
So he wouldn't be allowed this because it didn't pass, so.
Correct.
It checks and balances. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, item carries. Could someone take ten through thirteen, please?
Take those. Resolution approving an agreement with Blackout County for improvements to Donald Street and Elkhorn Road and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Second resolution is resolution approving submission of grant application for diesel emissions reduction grant, DERA, to replace one two thousand and five International Harvester D four six six garbage truck outdated tier-two emissions with a tier-four two thousand and eighteen emissions. Third, resolution approving award of Hotel Motel Mini Tax Grant to the Cedar Falls Lion Club in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. And finally, resolution approving federal regulation procurement requirements for FEMA projects.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On number twelve, I noted in there the attachments that they'd requested twelve thousand. But this says nineteen fifty, and I'm just wondering if that lower amount is going to get them to the point or to the, is it going to meet their requested need for which they asked this?
Uh, Tavis is not here, but I don't know if they make it a practice of giving everything they need to organizations. So I don't have that answer for you.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe their awards are contingent upon a successful implementation of another project, however. So if it's not enough money to get the job done, I don't think they'll get this money either.
Okay, okay. Thanks, Sharon.
All right, thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, now number thirteen is, you know, it's the FEMA thing. And if this is not a specific project, are we giving their okay for the federally required proposals that they might submit? Or what is going on here?
I'll try to do part of it. But remember, we had a conversations about some, the Iowa Homeland Security coming to the city of Waterloo from the OIG visit that we had in May. There were some particular things that we needed to have procurement right, procurement-wise, which has to be, we basically have to do these things because it's consistent with federal guidelines. And we needed to update in a couple areas. So these are the suggestions, and we're just taking the suggestions from Homeland Security and trying to make sure that we follow a federal process. But Michelle, if you want to add, add to these items?
Michelle Wheaton, our chief financial officer. So the federal government adopted new grant guidelines that were effective for federal agencies December twenty-sixth of two thousand and fourteen. Those are now filtering down to local agencies such as ours. So most of these requirements are new, but they will start applying to federal projects. And these specifically are drafted for FEMA, but almost all of them will apply to everything that we do going forward.
So, so, Mr. Mayor and Michelle, so we're just approving the requirements. We're not approving any open, open book for any project to go through or be approved. Is that correct, or?
No, these just are, this is a document that will give our staff the guidelines when they want to make purchases for things that would be reimbursed by a federal grant. They are going to have to go through all these hoops, basically, for that to qualify.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Number eleven, could we have an explanation about that? Is that garbage truck old and broken down?
Sandy.
Sandy Greco, Inter and Public Works Director. Uh, no, it's the emissions on it. Actually, the sanitation supervisor was looking online, trying to find grants for us to apply for things. And he found this, and they will in turn match, will have a match for it. And it's, the garbage truck is outdated, but it's, how can I say this? It's a backup for our other garbage trucks right now. So if we change the emissions on it, it's going to update it, and it will be a perfect backup. So when one of our normal garbage trucks is down for repairs, which happens every week, this will be a backup so we can get back out on the street.
So you're applying for a grant?
Right, we're just applying for the grant.
So if you don't get the grant right now?
We'll just use the truck as it is. Thank you.
All right, we appreciate, or I appreciate any types of outside funding that we can take a look and try to build from, so. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number fourteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the action taken by this council on two-five-eighteen regarding item one B four, recommendation of appointment of Jonathan Ulrich from civil service list to position of garage mechanic at Public Works effective two-seven-eighteen.
Second. That motion's been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor.
Prior to some discussion, what I'm going to ask is, this obviously has been where folks haven't agreed. I am asking that from this one, when we made all, not all agree, moving forward, if we could keep our comments germane, if we could be not accusatory, we keep other council members' names out our mouth, but whatever it is, if we could, if there is debate or a conversation that we could keep it germane and all of us lead by example to the folks that are watching it in the audience. But, Mr. Schimpf?
Did Mr. Zellifer have a?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right. Dave, we've had some questions the last couple weeks. Could you stand up and tell us some of those answers? And then afterwards?
I have comments after that.
Dave Zellifer, City Attorney, was that a comment or a question, Mr. Schimpf? Am I premature?
Well, I, I, I want you to make a presentation about, you know, the questions that have been asked.
It's just a procedural question. Well, bottom line is, was the action of February fifth legal? Is that what we're talking about? We get, there's lots of potential issues. The bottom line is, the city council is, we have a mayor council form of government, as you all well know. And under Iowa Code, section four hundred point fifteen, dealing with civil service appointments, the bottom line is the council makes the final decision. What we had before in August of twenty seventeen was a committee, a committee that's no longer in existence, but it was the Human Resources Committee. That is a standing committee according to the ordinances of the city of Waterloo. Their job is to collect data, make a recommendation to the council either in the form of a motion, a resolution, or an ordinance. And then the council acts. And that's exactly what happened on February fifth. The standing committee made a recommendation to hire the gentleman. And the council is, at that time, free to say no, which they did. The state code gives them that right, and they exercise that right. Now, you can all say, we should have had some prior warning. You don't like the way they did it, or blah, blah, whatever. But that's the law, and that's what it is. And it's section four hundred point fifteen of the Iowa Code. I've confirmed this with a number of other city attorneys and from around the state, and they all agree with me. I did not receive one dissenting vote from anyone. So as much as a lot of you might not like it, it's legal.
All right, and then Kelly, can you explain? Because I've had some questions about rescind versus reconsideration, and if that is just what that actually means? Or what is, what are folks being asked to vote on right now?
So there has been some confusion between reconsideration and rescinding a motion. Reconsideration is outlined in our city code under four, or excuse me, one-four-three F. And that has to take place immediately after a vote is taken. So if you'll recall, there were some requests to reconsider the motion taken by council. But the members of, two members from the prevailing side have to make that motion to reconsider. And that did not take place. So at this point in time, what can take place is a reconsider, or excuse me, is a recension or rescinding the motion that was taken. And Mayor touched on this a little bit at the beginning of the meeting. Typically, when rescinding has come to council, it's been to rescind a resolution. And we've rescinded things such as setting the date of public hearing. For example, if we need to push back a public hearing date and time, when we're rescinding that, what you're doing is you're removing that from the record. So you're removing the public hearing date that you set prior to adjust it so that there's only one public hearing date set on the agenda. So under this circumstance, to rescind this motion, if it were to be approved, what you'd be doing is removing the action that was taken prior from the record. So you would be taking his appointment and putting him back into the consideration pool on the civil service list. So that if the council chose to appoint Mr. Ulrich at a later date, he would still be eligible, or the council could also consider a different candidate. If this vote fails, then he cannot be considered at any point in time in the future because the council has voted to not appoint this individual.
Mr. Mayor, then, so my vote on this was purely budgetary. None of the seven of us sitting up here know what our budget is going to look like next year. It is correct that this position had been budgeted for, but this was for fiscal year which ends in July, so that's in three months. I'm told how important this position is to our city, yet I see that it took until February to actually put it on the agenda. I feel bad for all parties involved, but unfortunately, we're dealing with a different set of circumstances than the previous council was. I agree with the statement that elections have consequences. I knocked on hundreds of doors during the election and heard loud and clear that people in my ward want to see lower taxes. I was elected on a platform to lower taxes and took my seat on the council in January. Since then, I've seen the harsh realities of a city budget. My colleague from Ward Three can be as pro-tax as he'd like, and he's entitled to vote however he wants. I would ask him to have that same respect for me and our other colleagues on the council. He has cast several votes while on council that I have disagreed with, but he will not see me bringing them forward motions to rescind his past actions. The majority of the council agreed with him on past votes, and I respect the will of the majority of the people's representatives. On this issue, my vote was a no because I want to see how our budget looks next year and not how it looks this year. It would be fiscally irresponsible of me to hire a new eighty-four thousand dollar position before I even voted on my first budget. After we pass a budget, I'm willing to revisit this issue, though. Although that willingness keeps losing ground each week as I sit here and listen to grandstanding and mudslinging. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table, I make a motion to table the motion on the floor until at least January of twenty eighteen, after the new fiscal year begins.
Second.
And I also move to call the question.
Excuse me, you said January of two thousand and eighteen?
Excuse me, July.
July.
July, twenty eighteen.
So I will, the comments about mudslinging and grandstanding was how I opened up, and I kind of want to move away from those comments. And just as I'm asking Mr. Morrissey, I'm also asking all of you as well, so.
Mr. Mayor?
There was a motion to call the question.
There was a motion to table until, to table the vote until July twenty eighteen and to call the question.
And I seconded the first motion.
What is that? Then we have to vote?
We've got two motions combined into one?
Hold on a second.
I don't know that you can do that.
No.
I think, I think we need to do one motion at a time, please. If the motion to table is first, you should do that first.
And it received a second from Mrs. Klein, correct?
Yes.
That's fine, but I also heard a second motion, and I'm not sure. Just make sure we know which one we're voting on.
Which one are we voting on? It would have to be the table. No, it could be the motion to. What was the other motion?
Call the question, I believe.
Table and call the question?
I think the second one was call the question, wasn't it? I think that's what I heard.
So we've got a section in our code. It's under Title One, Chapter Four, Section Three, Subsection D, multiple issues within one question. It states if a question in debate contains several distinct propositions, any member may have the question divided when the sense admits of it prior to the vote thereon. So if you want the vote, if you want the motion divided into two separate questions, someone can make a request to do that.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor?
What are we doing first?
What's so moved? I mean, the motions on-
Which motion are we taking?
So the first motion was, so you-
So we have a, do you want me to explain it?
Go ahead.
So we have a motion and a second on the table to table the item and to call the question. Our code states that if you have multiple questions to consider within one motion, that a member of council can request that it gets divided. Mrs. Klein has made the request to divide it. It does not say that it needs to have a second or anything like that.
And so, Mr. Mayor, which issue are we voting on?
So there's no discussion?
First, we would need to vote on motion to table.
So-
And then, but really, we wouldn't need to call the question, then.
So is that, is that debatable?
Do I need to rescind my motion to call the question and just move to table?
I think that'd be appropriate.
Do we vote on that right now?
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
So-
I'd say I rescind my motion to call the question then, and my motion to table until July twenty eighteen stands.
Can we clarify, doesn't a motion to table need? Two-thirds vote? I could be wrong.
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
So is there any debate that happens on this with this motion? Because you can't call any question. That is a, a separate one, but don't you get in a?
Yes, sir.
A motion to table is not debatable.
Because I think you need a majority.
Simple majority.
Just simple? Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Without any debate on the motion to table, we have a standing motion that was read and seconded that we have not even had an opportunity, some of us, to speak to. And I would consider a motion to table germane, but only after the motion itself has been given its proper due course of the people that want to speak to that initial motion being allowed to talk to that motion.
So I'm going to lean to my city attorney. What is that allowed to?
A motion to table cannot be made while someone else has the floor. Usually, it is following all debate.
So you have to allow?
On the original motion.
So you have to allow conversation?
Yeah, I think right now what we should do is have a conversation about the original motion, Mr. Morrissey's motion, and move on.
Author of the, so Mr. Morrissey can speak? And then folks, then we take a vote on the motion to table?
Yeah, you know, a motion to rescind is not that unusual. We do it all the time. You probably don't recognize it for what it is. This is the first time, I think, in the hundred and fifty consecutive meetings I've been here where it's been adversarial. Normally, it's we have the wrong legal description, and we pass the motion, and we need to rescind it and do it over again. Something simple and mundane like this. So we have to remember that the bottom line is the motion has been made. It should probably, I guess I would recommend it be voted on and not tabled, but just for purposes, I don't, I'm not into policy and politics, but just from a cleanliness standpoint, get it done one way or the other and move on. But right now, let's handle Mr. Morrissey's motion, move it on, and see what happens.
So, but the question, the question I have is, Mr. Morrissey, since he's the, the one that placed this on here as the, the person that did it, does he have an opportunity to say something to what Mr. Schimpf had made? And it was second, that's what I want to know.
Yeah, the motion to rescind is debatable.
But is the motion to table debatable?
No.
So we have to go ahead and take a vote on the motion to table right now?
Well, we're not debating the motion to table. We're, the motion to table, I don't think is even proper while there's another motion on the floor right now.
Mr. Mayor?
Hasn't been debated.
Can he show us that, where it says there's a time limit on when to say we'd like to table? I'd like to see the chapter and verse.
It's a common sense type thing, and motion, let me see if I can see it. Chapter and verse, Isaiah chapter.
All I want to know, the motion on the table is obviously going to stand. All I need to know does is, is Mr. Morrissey able to have comments? That's all, that's all we need to know. Is that legal or not?
Mr. Mayor?
He might have something.
The bottom line is the motion to table is not allowed when somebody else has the floor. Okay, and it was my understanding Mr. Morrissey had the floor. Did he yield it to Mr. Schimpf then?
Well, I did not have the floor when Mr. Schimpf asked for recognition Well, I did not have the floor when Mr. Schimpf, um, asked for recognition from the presiding officer, uh, Mr. Zellifer.
Okay.
But then again, at the same time I'm saying that, I'm saying that I had not been given an opportunity to, um, do anything other than read the motion and have it seconded, you know? So, I didn't have a chance to speak. And I, no, nobody else on council did either to this motion. And in the interest of transparency, in the interest of us being a deliberative body, um, I think we should be allowed to debate this.
Mr., the, the city council's free to do its thing here, as far as how you want to. Robert's Rules of Order just doesn't cover everything. When they say you, when someone has the floor, you can't make a motion to, to lay on the table, and, and that's what happened. Uh, I guess it depends on the council, do you wanna debate this some more? A simple motion to table would be easy. It'd be four to three, be all over, probably, we wouldn't see it until July, but who knows? Uh, but I do think debate is why we're here today, and getting rid of the motion to rescind, uh, one way or the other would be in everybody's benefit.
So, who has comment?
I do, Mayor.
I have comments.
And you are free to lead the way with comments, uh, as you, as you deem fit, you're in charge of the meeting.
Can I just make a note on Robert's Rules of Order, too? There's been a lot of debate lately, um, especially surrounding this item, um, about where Robert's Rules of Order fits in with our Rules of Order. So, we always have to keep in mind the hierarchy of laws and order within the government, too. The number one that trumps everything is state law. Where state law is silent, we fall back to our city code. What our city code says about parliamentary rules to govern is vague. It says, "In all cases not provided for herein, the usual parliamentary rules which govern parliamentary bodies shall govern the city council where they are applicable." Our city code does have some rules of procedure, but it doesn't specifically state that Robert's Rules of Order have to be followed at all times. Um, and then oftentimes, they're not followed very well on our council, so just a little bit of a note on those parliamentary rules.
So, that goes back to the question, is, Mr. Morrissey was the author of the original motion, um, and it has been asked that we table that. Does Mr., is Mr. Morrissey allowed an opportunity to at least talk about this, so we can finally vote on this and move on?
I think what Mr. Zellifer is trying to say, and what I'm trying to say, is that, you're free to debate.
Let's, I mean, can we just talk, just talk and move, okay? Mr. Morrissey?
I'll rescind my motion to table.
You rescind the second? No, I won't rescind the second.
So...
So, it stands, so if there's any other comments or questions, now's the time.
All right.
I, I'm, y- you really got me, I, I'm, w- we have a motion to table that hasn't been, even though the motioner asked to have it removed, but then the seconder is not allowing that. So, do we move ahead with the original motion, or what, Mr. Mayor?
I think folks were at the point of at least giving you an opportunity to say something, so we can move this issue forward. Waterloo is many issues, many opportunities, so let's... We would love to hear what you have to say.
Well, I, first of all, um, regarding tabling this, we got a person, John Olarick, who, um, i- i- you know, if we're gonna wait till July, John Olarick's supposed to wait around till July? Um, I mean, talk about something that's unfair, I think that's unfair. As to any comments about me grandstanding or doing anything else, uh, if, if following parliamentary rules and procedures is grandstanding, or if defending and standing up for one of our fellow residents of Waterloo, and my belief, and other people in the community's belief, that that person has been harmed, then I guess I have been grandstanding. Uh, but I will continue to grandstand if I believe somebody has been harmed, uh, in the course of any action taken by myself or any other council, uh, vote. Uh, I don't see that as being inappropriate, I have not been uncivil to anybody, uh, in regards to this. This is something that I'm very passionate about, as you know, Mr. Mayor, uh, and anybody on council knows. And to be passionate about an issue, and to be in defense of something that I believe resulted in a harm to somebody in Waterloo, I will continue to do that, okay? Now, in, in relation to the motion to rescind, the reason why, um, I did this, and is contrary to what I've heard, uh, our city clerk, as well as even the city attorney say, is that Robert's Rules of Order does take hold in all cases, our code of ordinance even speaks to that. And it, the result of a motion to rescind, i- in no way, shape, or form means that John Olarick could not be assigned to this, uh, position. What a motion to rescind does, and this is according to Robert's Rules of Order, um, applied, simplified and applied, the twenty fourteen edition, which is what I look to, uh, in situations like this, it says, "If the motion is adopted," and that's the motion to rescind, "the previously adopted motion is reversed." That's what it says, or changed. Okay, so, that is where I come with this, as far as the criteria that has to be met in order to allow a motion to rescind, and all those criterias, criterion are in place. Now, if a motion to rescind was left and tabled, I have no idea what action could, uh, proceed from this point forward until July first, but more than likely, there's gonna be some action that would make the motion to rescind moot at that point in time. The other thing that I want to note, and I respect, uh, Attorney Zellifer's opinion, Kelly's opinion, but what happened on August twenty eighth, um, was a council of the whole voted to, um, start the civil service process and to make an appointment. And I have those, uh, documents that show that that's what the council of seven approved. Now, because there was only four there that day, is not my fault. Um, that's who, the three that didn't show up that day. So, if that is not a council action, then in order to follow the logic that City Attorney Zellifer is saying, um, and, uh, uh, the clerk is saying, then what would have to be the case is that on February fifth, that consent agenda item would've had to include a motion to start the civil service process and make the appointment, if what is being said is that the council of seven never voted on it. So, what happened on February fifth only had to do with the recommendation of appointment that was made by Sandy Greco, um, and to John Olarick. Therefore, that makes, that motion completely wrong if you don't include also the motion that was made to get it started. That would require as four hundred point one five states for both those actions to be approved by the council. You can't have it both ways. You can't say, "Well, it applies only with the recommendation of appointment, but it doesn't apply with starting the civil service process." If it's required that the council has to approve both, and that's what four hundred point one five says, and that's what the council of the whole on August twenty eighth did, it approved that. So, what I'm asking is, on the fifth of February, that motion was not a proper motion, and that that motion was made as part of a consent agenda and needs to be approved either as a body up or down, and it was not. Therefore, rescinding that action makes that entire body of motions at that time subject to that approval. That's what my argument is, that's why I gave, I, I asked for this, uh, motion to be put on the agenda a week ago, and I will continue to main that, maintain that. And that in, is in no way grandstanding, that to me is following proper procedures that are pertinent because our code of ordinances says that where it not, where it's not spoken to, in our code of ordinances or state law, we address it in here, and that's what I have done, Mr. Mayor. And I asked for the council to vote to get John Olarick this position, which should've been approved on February fifth.
All right, thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Mayor? Been thinking about this a long time, had some conversations with a few folks. One of my biggest concerns with all of this is, is the fact that I hear council members saying that, "I didn't vote on this individual, I voted on a budget issue." This vote was not about budget. This vote was about this young man being hired by the city of Waterloo for a position that was researched, for a position that was determined that was needed for the city of Waterloo to take care of maintenance issues for the garage. That was why I voted the way that I voted. You know, you have to understand that the vote that was taken, in my mind, was not a right vote, simply because when I hear people say, "Well, I'm voting because of the budget," this wasn't about the budget. This was about the young man and giving him the job. That was where this should have gone. The budget issues and those things are important, I understand that. I also understand that a year ago or so, we voted on a budget to put this position there to help our city. Now, because we have new council members, they have the right to do what they did, I understand that totally. But what I'm seeing here is, is an opportunity to rescind a vote that was not even voted.
By council, and there's a motion to table, so we need to take that up now. Let me, so the motion to table, just for reason, so, so, but it, you need to have a second to withdraw it. So, I just need to understand, uh, percy, if, if there's a motion and a table, and we vote on that to take a look at this position in July, or when was it?
July.
July twenty eighteen.
For July twenty eighteen, um, then it extends to there. If the motion is rescinded, um, or if the motion to rescind is voted down, then it's done as of now.
Oh.
I mean, as far as the person that was voted on that night, right?
Well, first we'd have to get, so you're, you're asking...
I'm asking the alternative, because...
If, if it does, so you're asking if the motion to table goes through, and then back in July, when we pick it up again, if the motion to rescind fails, what happens?
Right.
Correct? Okay. So, in July, if the motion to table passes...
If we don't vote on the rescind?
Right, so if you vote to table, then we don't take this up again until July, and then if the motion to rescind does not pass, then the motion that's on the books stands.
And we'd have to have a motion to bring it back on the table?
If the motion to rescind fails, then the, the vote taken by council stands, so he would not be appointed to the position.
But if we table it, we're not voting on the motion to rescind?
Right, all you, if you vote to approve a table, all you're doing is voting to push it back till July.
My question, Mr. Mayor, is if that position remains in the fiscal year nineteen budget, um, so we've got it in fiscal year eighteen already, if it's, um, we're convinced that it's important enough that it stays in the nineteen, then why would we have to wait until July? Because as soon as the budget's approved, next Thursday, could we not take it up right after that? Cause we've got it approved in the eighteen already, and if we approve it in the nineteen, we wouldn't have to wait till July one, would we? And my understanding is if we vote to table it and approve it, then somebody's gotta make the motion to pull it off the table, and we then vote on the rescind then?
We have to bring it back.
Yeah. But somebody has to move.
July or prior to, a little bit before July.
Anytime.
Well, we, we, it has to be back on the agenda.
No.
Because if we give a timeframe, don't we have to put it on there anyway?
Yeah, if you, if the motion to table until July twenty eighteen is approved, it can't come back on the agenda until July.
Until July one.
Yeah. So, there we have it.
But Mr. Mayor can't, um, eh...
Someone on the prevailing side?
No, can't, eh, can't Mr. Schimpf change that to what Sharon suggests?
If you do it sooner, why not? They need the position.
He has, um, so if he's on the, the prevailing side, could bring that back whenever? If it's before July.
It would have to be voted, okay, it'd have to be voted down, and then you would need two members from the prevailing side, so two people who voted it down to bring it back at the next meeting, so that would be on the twelfth to reconsider the vote that was taken, in order to do a reconsideration.
You're talking about the rescind?
Um, you know, uh...
I think we're getting really confused with timetables and things like that. So, the motion on the table is to table the item until July of twenty eighteen.
Did you say July?
And all I'm asking...
It's to table the, the rescind vote until two thou- to July of two thousand eighteen.
And then if you, if that fails, then we go back and we need to vote on the motion to rescind.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I, I, Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
All that I'm asking is to, for, um, Councilman Schimpf, having made that motion, if he would consider or change that to meet what Chair, what, uh, Councilmember Jewin has suggested, that's all I'm asking of, uh, the, uh, person who submitted the motion to table.
But he, he ended up, you, you ask, you ask, and it was to even get out of it, it was, it was denied by the person that second. At some point, we're gonna have to take up this vote. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
And I'm voting on the tabling?
Correct, this is a vote on the motion to table until July of twenty eighteen.
No.
Mr. Schimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, item tabled until, uh, July.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, we adjourned.